Let me fix that for you.
Oh, sweet, thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, October 2nd, and we are at the Veterans Memorial Building. We have a full contingent tonight, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please have a moment of silence to begin the meeting? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, could we raise, face a flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Okay. This is a time we reserve for public comment, for items that are not on the agenda, so if you would like to say something, address the Planning Commission, please step forward, state your name. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no presentations, so moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any questions on the consent calendar from anyone? Okay, so items A1 through A4. Can I get a motion?
If we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, moving on to public hearings. We have item number B1. This is case number, essentially we'll be taking item number B1 and B2, you know, at the same time. So, that will be case number for item number B1, CPO-563/UPO-522. That's 300 Tahiti Street. And then on item B2 will be case number CPO-570/UPO-523, and that's 310 Tahiti Street. Have we had any, has anybody had any contact that they'd like to state? Okay. Staff, are you, you got a report for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chairman Luer, and good evening Commissioners. Before we start, I did want to let you know that I did receive a piece of correspondence, which you have copies up on the DS. I've made copies available on the table there for the public. There is a neighbor that is concerned about the overall height of the buildings, as well as parking for the accessory dwelling units. The state law requires us to, the city cannot require parking for the accessory dwelling unit when it's within a half a mile of a transit stop. And the height will be discussed in the presentation. Okay, so we are looking at a request for conditional use permit approval at 30310 Tahiti. This matter has been continued from the June 5th Planning Commission meeting, when the applicant was directed to submit revised plans that more closely comply with the height allowances in the MCR R4 SP zoning district. The projects require coastal development permit and minor use permit approval because the applicant's proposing to construct single-family residential development in the MCR R4 zoning district. All proposed development has been designed to meet or exceed the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. At 300 Tahiti, on the corner of Main, the applicant is proposing a 1,276 square foot single-family residence, 634 square foot accessory dwelling unit, and a 546 square foot garage, which is the parcel on the right-hand side of your image there. At 310 Tahiti, on the left, the proposal includes a 1,319 square foot single-family residence, a 655 square foot ADU accessory dwelling unit, excuse me, and a 636 square foot garage. The Commissioner's main concern with the original proposal was with the overall height of the proposed development. The Morro Bay Municipal Code requires that not more than one-third of the west elevation of the building roofline shall exceed 25 feet in height. This slide shows the 3D renderings of the two proposals. The original proposal with the majority of the roofline over the 25 feet is in the image at the bottom on the left, and the updated proposal that complies with the requirement is the upper image to the right. These images illustrate the western elevation of the proposed house at 300 Tahiti that faces Main Street and Highway 1. The larger image at the right is the updated proposal with 33% of the roofline over 25 feet. And the dotted line at the very top of both images is the 30-foot height limit. Gives you a pretty good illustration there. These images illustrate the eastern elevation of the proposed house at 310 Tahiti. The larger image at the right is the updated proposal with the, again, 33% of the roofline over 25 feet. So therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt Resolutions 2718 and 2818, which include the findings and conditions of approval for permits CP0563, UP0522, CP0570, and UP0523. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
I just, just one question. The last time it appeared before the commission, I was of the opinion that the exception that allows for more than 25 feet only applied if the structure with an imposed flat roof, theoretically, was 25 feet or less. And I looked at the design, and it seems to me that the current design would sort of fit that criterion.
Yes, sir. To allow for roofline variation and visual interest along Main Street.
Yeah, but the actual structure, if they dispense with the currently designed roof structure and just put a straight, flat thing on it, it would be 25 feet or less than that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. So I was, I have to admit, I have to admit, I was a little confused about which plan was the, was the new plan and which one was the older proposal. So it seemed like there was a, the roofline was still across, if you look at the east elevation...
Getting there, hang on just a second.
On... Because they weren't, Exhibit D, is that the, is that the proposed, or is that the...
I'm sorry, which exhibit are you referring to?
Exhibit D, is that the...
These are the plans for 310 Tahiti. The Exhibit C is 300 Tahiti, separated out. Exhibit D is 310. And then Exhibit E is the staff report and the previous plan submittals and all of the exhibits from the June meeting.
Okay, it just, okay, if you look at Exhibit D, on elevation 1, on the east elevation, to me, it looks like there's a roofline up above 27 foot 3, and it's 42 feet long. Am I, am I reading that wrong, or how is...
I'm sorry, are you looking at, which elevation are you looking at again? I apologize.
I'm looking at elevation 1, it's the east elevation, on 310 Tahiti.
It's 14 feet long and 27 feet 3 inches high.
I see what he's looking at. I do see what you're looking at.
Yeah.
I think they're just measuring the width of the structure. It's a measurement line that gets up to the 42 foot, 1 inch width.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's just not, it's poorly shown.
Okay, okay.
But I do see what you're looking at, yes. It's a solid line, and you could, it looks a little bit like that's supposed to be the roof, but it's not, it's just measuring the width.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
To me, it read like a roofline.
On the one side, that's what it looks like, because it's a solid line going up, but when you look at the top, it's just measuring the line across.
Okay, okay, good. I just wanted to be, to be sure on that. Okay, so at this point, we'll, any further questions on this then? Then we'll have, we'll open it up for public comment. Would the applicant please step forward, if you wish?
Hi, everybody. Joel Snyder with Tenover Studio. This is our third trip here to see you. Thanks for seeing us again. I think, you know, I'll just start saying, you know, from the very beginning, my client's been very excited to bring forward a project that has, provides housing. Having the ADU accessory dwelling unit be a component of the project allows him to have multiple units that are affordable by design. They're not large units. They're going to serve a housing need that this whole community feels. So in the past, we've shown you, we're not blocking views, we're not over the 30-foot high limit, we're not out of scale with the neighborhood, we're not out of context with the neighborhood, and we've provided plenty of parking for our proposed residences and ADUs. In the past, you've complemented our design, and you've asked us to vary rooflines with under, sort of to the letter of the ordinance, so getting the maximum percentage of roofline over 25 feet to be 30%, 33%. And we've returned with those design revisions. You've had us work hard, we've kind of had to go back and scratch our heads how to do that, shrink framing sizes, keep pushing the building down, just keep working it down, keep pining it down, so that you hopefully feel confident that what we've done meets the provisions of the zoning code to the letter, and we're happy with what we have, and we hope you're happy with it as well. And I'm really just up here to, to serve a reminder, the reason for this going above the 25 feet is to have the varied roof heights, to have the pitched roofs. And that, the reason that's written in the ordinance is those varied rooflines, rather than fat, flat rooflines, allow for the building to feel less scale and less massive. Maybe it's over 25 feet, but the varied rooflines allow it to feel actually smaller. So that's the reason for that ordinance, we believe that to be true. If we were to have to not come to you to go over the 25 feet, we would have to come to you with a flat roof. And so that's not something we want to do. We're proud of our design, we think it's better for the community, we think it's better for this project, and we hope you do too. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll leave it open, call you up afterwards. Anybody else like to speak to this item?
Good evening, guys. I do want to thank you very much for, you know, enduring this thing with us, we, you know, we...
Excuse me, could you state your name again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you know, I didn't say that. I'm sorry, I'm Ken Stolmeyer. I'm the one that's applying for this permit. And my wife and I's total, from the beginning, plan on this thing was to put together a nice-looking project on our piece of land there. And we really wanted to have something that had, you know, some appearance to the neighborhood. We didn't want something really boisterous or very bold, we didn't want to put the typical two-story house out there, that would have been just a shoebox, which would have been more of a footprint than the houses that we're going to try to propose for you. But, you know, my architects have spent a lot of time and effort in giving me all kinds of proposals that I still like architecturally, because it's, to me, it's still about aesthetics. I still want it something that I think has a value, it has a beachy feel, it has a very airy feel. Yes, it stepped over the 25-foot mark, but we're going to get a lot of use out of it. I think the city of Morro Bay is going to win out of this thing, because we have, we're going to bring in some tenants that have that, that we're not catering to right now at this point. So, again, I'm hoping that you guys see that, this direction. We've done everything we can, plus a lot of money out of my pocket trying to make this thing work, and I really, it's my retirement, my wife and I's retirement, so we're really looking forward to you guys giving us a yes on this thing. I thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Please, please state your name.
Sure. My name is Kirsten Broom.
In the microphone. I'm sorry.
Hi, hi, my name is Kirsten, I'm sorry about that. My name is Kirsten Broom. I'm the trustee for the James Albert Ross Living Trust. A lot of you who are longtime Morro Bay residents probably know my uncle Jim from Ross Electrics. And basically, his house is the gray outline to the back of this proposed development. You know, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Ken, with developing North Morro Bay, providing more housing, providing a really interesting aesthetic architectural home, but as far as views not being blocked, my uncle built his home, the gray box behind the proposed development, you know, 30-plus years ago, and I was there this afternoon, and right now there are views out the north of his home, which at the moment is a parking lot, and has been a parking lot for 30-plus years, as your lamp store was there. So where I appreciate development in North Morro Bay, I think there is a significant impact on Jim's home, and Mr. Stolmeyer talked about this being his retirement investment, that's my uncle Jim's retirement investment. You know, that's what's going to pay for his care, along with his apartments on Tahiti. So, I know change happens, and I hope that if this is a change that you want to have in North Morro Bay, that you support future developments of this type. Because I know, having spoken to other neighbors, that if this sets a precedence for the area, we have an expectation, my uncle Jim has an expectation as a property owner in that area, to, if he desires, make a development of that size, of that impact. So, as you're, you know, you've reviewed this so much, I really appreciate the time you've put into it, the thought you've put into it. You're the Planning Commission, you're directing the look, the aesthetic, the feel, the housing available for people in North Morro Bay. So, if this is the plan that you think is appropriate, and that you decide to approve and take forward, I appreciate the time you've put into going back and forth about rooflines, the careful consideration you've put into the impact it'll have in North Morro Bay. And I really do hope that if this is approved, it will be setting a precedence for development in North Morro Bay, and other property owners can, going forward, with the due diligence and, you know, within zoning regulations and with approval of the commission, be able to assume that we can also have developments like that in North Morro Bay. So, thank you for hearing from me, and, you know, thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay, do we have questions for the applicant? Okay. Would the applicant please step forward? And probably the...
Mostly Mr. Snyder, I think. The, the drawing we have up there shows sort of a pipe rail, open rail system going up the steps that are out into the, onto the Tahiti side. That's the, that's the intended look. The drawings don't always show what's there.
Correct.
But that's, that's the intent. Okay, so this kind of open look. And then, do they violate the front setback, or are they in, they outside of the front setback?
They're outside of setback.
They're actually inside of the front setback, but as long as you're under 30 inches, you're allowed to be in that front setback.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, because the, even though you're building out at the face of the setback, much of the building is actually set farther back.
Correct.
And one of the things I especially wanted to verify is the lower level is even pushed back a bit as well. Because that corner with the adjacent person, I'm assuming that's actually pushed back from the maximum point you could put the rear of that. So you do have that, that first, that second-level balcony on the, on the accessory dwelling unit facing the west.
Right.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Okay, I think, I think we're good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission here. Does anybody want to get started on this? Joseph?
I, for one, appreciate the scale of the, of the project, in that there's a possibility that it'll bring something resembling affordable housing to Morro Bay, market-determined affordable housing, because of the, the actual dwellings are, you know, more modest. I also suspect that the notion of how much discretion we have on this commission is overstated. And by that, I mean, as has already been stated, the accessory dwelling units, we can't legislate that there be parking, additional parking for those. And the exception that allows for going beyond the 25-foot maximum is there, written into the city ordinance, and it's available if, if, if we feel that the roof design that goes above 25 feet adds to the aesthetics of the, of the, of the structure. And it seems, it seems to fulfill that here. I'd be hard-pressed to say that it doesn't contribute to a more appealing building, which isn't to say that, you know, you can't, I was recently traveling, and I was mindful of, of a lot of two- and three-story structures that I saw, and where I was, where I was visiting, and they were very, very attractive, even though they had flat roofs. But, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't, I don't think I could effectively argue that in this case, that roof doesn't contribute to the, a more pleasing appearance. So that was, and so that was my point, is that essentially, there's an exception written into the, into the ordinance that allows for this sort of situation. And frankly, if, if people are opposed to higher structures, then it would seem to me that the appropriate thing to do would sort of take it up with the city, the city council and lobby to change and eliminate that exception, but frankly, the exception is, is there in black and white, and pretty unambiguous. Those are my thoughts, okay? Jesse?
I agree with, with most of that. You know, it's fairly black and white, on that the variation roofline allows you to go above 25 feet, not to exceed one-third of the height of the structure, and I think the architecture firm did a very good job in accommodating that, listening to the needs of the community, the wants of the community. And at the end of the day, we've got to remember, what we're trying to do here is just all live together, and, and try to build consensus. So I think they've done a great job with that, and I appreciate their efforts. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Michael?
I think the design is exceptional. I think this will be one of the first times we've seen a building where so much effort has been placed about taking the garage below the main perimeter, and what that actually does is lower the upper floor down. So I think this, this actually presents itself to the street in an interesting fashion, because we'll be seeing that, that upper floor that we usually see above the first-floor garage is actually in scale to the human body, closer to the street, and I think that's a, that's a good thing. I think the way that the, the north elevations dance up and down as you go up the street is amazing. As I noted, the southwest corner that's pushed back acknowledges that the adjacent owner will have more than the law would have necessarily suggested as a view that's retained. I think the roofs have gotten better, and I think it's a really nice project. I love hearing, this unit's going to be 600 square feet. We know that's not going to be a multi-bedroom kind of thing, you know, and I think so much of what we see concerned in the state now about affordable housing, I don't know if this will qualify as affordable, but it's going to be more affordable than most of the options that are out there. And for, especially for a single person, or a parent with one child, perhaps, that that's a, that's a decent way to be here. So I think it's pretty good.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I, I think you guys did a, you know, since the, we met, met the last time, you did a lot of work and did a nice job. And I, I looked at, when I look at this, and I think, I talked to Scott not too long ago, and we talked about the, the social fabric of the, of what we're doing here, you know, when we look at development and, and building, and kind of bouncing off what Michael was saying about affordable housing. Affordable housing is going to be governed by square footage, and what I see here is a development that uses architectural, interesting architectural rooflines and, and designs that, that I think merit consideration, and I think one of the speakers was mentioning about other projects, you know, being in, you know, like, could it be something in Morro Bay, a trend? I feel that we, you know, we, we've been going to these, like, Planning Commission meetings, and what's happening in the trends in California, and the housing shortages, and, and when I look at, looking into the future, I think that what we're going to see is people with less cars, people are, you know, the, the, the value of, of, of small, good-quality-designed homes is going to be a, a trend instead of the mansionization of it. So, you know, based on, on what I see here, I, I feel that the applicant and the owners, especially the owner's been here for a long time, I have a lot of friends that grew up here, they know you guys, you know? And, and I think that, that, that this, this will be a positive, I think, for our, our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. I have to agree with most, everything that's said here. What I do appreciate is that this, this project could have come to the very corners of the cube, and we would still need to allow it, because it would have fit, fit the parameters. But what they did do is they, they brought us, they brought us a project with, with, you know, step backs and articulation that dances across the facades, and I think it's going to, you know, like the previous speaker said, I would, I would like to see more projects within this ilk, and this, this design quality come forward. And so I do appreciate, appreciate the extra work that got put into it, and I think we have a better project for, for that. And so, Jesse?
Forgot to say one thing, it was Ms. Broom, right?
Yes.
I wanted to address what you had talked about in, in setting precedents, and I think this is going to be a precedent-setting, and I think we're also going to be seeing more and more changes to how we build, and, and the exceptions are going to be more and more. Going to, I don't know what you call it, a conference, I guess, on Thursday about energy exceptions for ADUs that are upcoming. So these, these rules are going to be evolving, and, you know, those of us that are, you know, those of us that have been doing this for a long time are going to maybe be a little change averse, but they're coming. These, these parking exceptions, these energy exceptions, these... These parking exceptions, these energy exceptions, these ADU exceptions are going to be compounding. I think the state's going to get more liberal with this than less in the future, so just kind of wanted to bring this up. And I do think this is precedent-setting, and yes, I would vote for this type of project again in the future, so.
I'd just like to also say that, you know, what was brought up, an item that was brought up was, you know, this was a parking lot before, so somebody enjoyed these views over a parking lot over somebody else's developable space. So it, you know, they essentially had the free use of that developable space for those 30 years. And I don't, you know, so I just want, that's the other side of it. You know, there are, you know, there's value in both, and private views are not protected in this town, so. So do we have a motion?
We need motions on them separately, so motion, second vote for 300. Motion, second vote for 310, please.
All right, well, I'll try to knock this thing out here. So Chairman and I move that the Planning Commission approve CPO 563/UP0-522, 300 Tahiti Street, request for a coastal development permit and a minor-use permit for the construction of a single-family dwelling with an accessory dwelling unit.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Can we call the question then?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Broome.
Aye.
Commissioner Engraffia.
Aye.
And Chairman Lur.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, let's work on... You're rolling here, Jesse. You want to do the next one?
Sure, I'll go give it a whirl here. So Chairman and I also move that we approve the Planning Commission adopt CP0-570/UP0-523 at 310 Tahiti Street, a request for a coastal development permit and minor-use permit for the construction of a new single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit.
I'll second that.
Discussion? None? Call the question?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Broome.
Aye.
Commissioner Engraffia.
Aye.
And Chairman Lur.
Yes.
And this motion also passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much, and, you know, thanks for all the work on this one. Okay, so we got through B1 and B2. We're now into B3. Is that you also, Joan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you ready to?
I have to get that.
Okay. Do we have any ex parte communication on this? Nope, okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes?
When you're ready.
Okay, here we go. So the next item on the agenda this evening is a request for conditional use permit approval and a parking exception at 321 Trinidad Street. The applicant's proposed to construct in addition to an existing non-conforming residence that's located on a parcel in the MCR R4 SP zoning district, and it's in the Delmar neighborhood in North Morro Bay. The... Pardon me. The structure is considered non-conforming with regard to the existing side yard setback and the parking on-site. The proposed addition complies with the development standards. The project proposes no change to the existing parking arrangement on-site. The zoning ordinance requires two covered and enclosed parking spaces for single-family residential development in the MCR R4, but parking requirements in the immediately-adjacent R1-S1 residential district, which is one parcel to the east, require one covered parking space for residents under 1,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing a total of 890 square feet of habitable area on an existing parcel where the construction of a garage or a carport would require either major reconstruction or a variance to locate the structure within the side and the front yard setbacks. Site plan shows the proposed addition shaded at the rear of the parcel. The proposal is to add 362 square feet to an existing 528-square-foot residence, and for the parking exception to allow for the required parking space to be located on the driveway outside of the public right-of-way, as shown here with hatchmarks. I apologize. This is the existing site and residence. There was a condition of approval requiring the improvement of the driveway surface that has been included in the resolution before you. And because the existing structure was built in 1953, a historical evaluation is required per SEQA standards. And so therefore, staff is asking, recommending that a condition of approval be added to the resolution, requiring the report be submitted prior to building permit issuance. This is the proposed floor plan, showing the new master bedroom and bathroom and hallway at the rear of the existing structure. The front and rear elevations illustrate how the proposed addition is consistent with the architectural elements utilized in the existing residence, as well as the residential design guidelines. Note that there will be no visible change, as seen from the public right-of-way. The east and west elevations, the addition is seen at the right side, and it's seen on the right side of the image on the top, and the left at the image at the bottom. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit and parking exception through the adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 2918, subject to the associated findings and conditions, including an added condition requiring the submittal of a historical evaluation prior to building permit issuance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Richard, do you have any questions? We'll start with you. Okay, Jesse?
Just one question. Sprinklers, is it the same with the 50%? If they do a 50% expansion, then they have to sprinkle?
We have the sprinkler requirement for fire under?
No. Yeah, the requirement is if it goes over 1,000 square feet. So it doesn't matter if it's 50% or not? Okay.
Okay, Richard? I've got a question on you, Ms. Joan. I'm just... Okay, can we have an open carport that extends within, it would have to be within one foot of the property line to get a legal parking space in there that would be covered, would be attached to, it would have to be attached to the house and then extend to be open on the property line side? But it's been done before, but would it be legal at this point?
So the issue with that is placing it in such close proximity to the adjacent property line. You know, now you're starting to encroach on, I mean, these are small lots, and you're starting to get really close to the neighboring property. And so we took a look at that when we were doing this and went with, just leave parking the way that it is. It seems to have functioned fine to this point, and not required the covered or enclosed parking because of how close in proximity it would be to the adjacent, to the property line there with the structure, because it becomes a structure at that point. That was where we came in on that.
Okay, yeah, because it would have to be at the property line. You'd have to put the posts pretty much right inside the property line, and...
Exactly.
Yeah, so, okay, go ahead.
Two questions. First is, Jen, I think this is the first one we've seen where I can remember this idea of a historical review might be needed to be done. Can you just tell people what the ramifications of that could include if they find that it is historic?
So it's based on the age of the structure. There's been changes to the structure, I think, windows changed out, there's an addition on the side of it. It's not, I find it very unlikely that it would qualify as any sort of historic structure based on that, on the changes that have been made to it. But we need to go through that process and make sure if it was in some way, shape, or form to be determined to be as historically relevant in some fashion, we have to bring it back to the Planning Commission. Depending on what the recommendation was that would come out of the report, and you would have to see that and then render a decision based on that, so.
As I say, my recollection from when I was involved in these things like this is that if you do have a historic structure, and, you know, Commissioner Broome may have input on this, my understanding is you can actually assume that you may be given leeway from some codes because of its historic nature. In other words, instead of it being a burden, it's actually an asset that someone might be able to use. We can't add the covered carport because it'll damage the historical quality of the facade. So I was just saying, it's kind of an interest, my recollection is it works both ways in terms of when you get an assessment.
It can. I think what it's going to say is the structure's been altered, it's not historically relevant.
Right, I'm just talking in general.
Yeah, no, in general, yes, I think you're correct. I just think in this instance, it's not going to be an issue.
And then just to be clear, this does not follow a teardown of the project in the future. If they would go to do a two-story structure like many of their adjacent neighbors, none of this rides along with it.
I think we'd all come back and have a conversation about whether that's the appropriate thing to do, because, you know, like, we're going to do this addition now, and then two years from now, they're going to come back, you know, and say, "Okay, now we're going to put the second story on, and we got the parking exception, we're good." That's not how it works.
Okay.
You know, when you start doing major reconstruction, you're doing major reconstruction. At which point, we should be talking about bringing the project into compliance. A second story, you know, at least over the main portion of the structure, would be major reconstruction. Obviously, the thing's not designed to have a second floor.
Would we have to condition it if we wanted to have it come back because of that?
It would come back regardless.
Okay, yeah.
Richard?
Scott, talking about the historical part, years ago, I was in Long Beach, and I worked with a guy that did this restoration. In this historical part, did they have, like, I remember, he was telling me, you have to have a certain palette of color and all these kind of things. Do you, has that happened here in Morro Bay?
Long Beach has historical guidelines?
Yeah.
And...
All right, they have historical guidelines that go along with that, and they have a historical review committee, not unlike the City of San Luis has. And you have to go through that, you know, committee before you go to Planning Commission, you know, it's kind of a process, so same thing there. And, yeah, they weigh in on, you know, window styles and exterior materials, and they have color palettes that you're supposed to use based on the age of the structure and the architectural style of the structure. So, yeah, they do have, they do have some limitations there, I've seen. My friends that live in Long Beach is why I know this. They've had to go through the process. So, yeah, yes, they do have that. And again, San Luis has something similar. They do have a historical review committee that reviews projects for similar reasons, so.
But here, we just, you just go through...
We don't have that right now. Our draft general plan, LCP, suggests that we go develop historic guidelines and evaluate our housing stock for historical relevance and go through that process. And so that would be a future item once we adopt our general plan and LCP. That would be one of the, that's one of the go-do items, you know, it's one of the lists, so. And there's, and the Historical Society's interested in us going down that road and helping with it, which is, which is quite frankly fantastic, because there's a group out there to sort of help with it, so it's not just staff, you know, winging away.
Would that also lace in for iconic, what we would consider iconic buildings, or is that something different?
I think, you can identify historic structures that are relevant to the City of Morro Bay, types and specifically buildings, if you want. It's a, we can, we go through that process, we can identify things that we think are, whether they're, you know, historically relevant, you know, from like a SEQA standpoint or something is a different story, but we can identify things that we think are historically relevant and styles that we'd like to, you know, carry forward. And then what happens when somebody does come forward and has one of those, you know, one of those houses does come forward with a proposed remodel addition on one of our lists that's identified as historically relevant for us, and then it'll tell you what you're supposed to go do then. And it'll give them guidance, and you'd be expecting the project to be compliant with that when it comes back before this body, so, yeah.
Richard?
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry. I've been off for a couple weeks.
It's okay, I'll answer anything. I also was thinking about the historical significance of the home and cottages like it, but then I was really struck by what you said, which is kind of sensical, perhaps not here because there have been some non-historical modifications. But then it occurred to me, gee, we better do an inventory of the candidates in Morro Bay, because we may not have very many houses that have not been pristine, that haven't been significantly altered. And we don't want to eliminate the possibility of preserving any of these cottages because they've been altered in the past. It would be nice if we could find cottages that look pretty much the way they were when they were built, but no matter what, we ought to save some of them, even if they've been altered a little bit. That was my thought.
And normally what you have is you have guidelines in there that, you know, what it takes to preserve those structures that you've identified on your lists, and what you can and can't do as far as remodeling additions go. Because normally, you can add on to those structures if you've gone through the process to identify them in your historical reports, so.
Okay, at this point, I think we'll open up public comment. Would the applicant like to step forward and make their case? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Shelley Kenny. My husband, Paul Kenny.
Oh, how are you doing?
Thank you.
Hi, well, we, actually, the other parties that were here this evening, we sit right in the four corners up there. So we're going to look like the dwarf on the block if we get this moved forward, but it's all okay, that was our plan. We do not want to be mortgage poor and do not want to climb chairs in our senior, or stairs, rather, in our senior year, so we're opting to keep it small. The historical evaluation, I'm curious, what is, what constitutes a historical home? What age? Like you said, ours was built in '53, so I was just curious what age constitutes that.
Go ahead.
The California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, requires a historical evaluation for any structure over 50 years old that has not been significantly altered. And so they're looking at two things, both architectural historical relevance, as well as potentially some famous person of some sort that...
That would be historically relevant to the City of Morro Bay, or to the State of California, or to our nation as a whole.
Okay.
Should not that be disclosed when the property comes up for sale? Or is it just when you're going to go ahead and do an addition or something that that comes up?
It's state law.
I, no, I understand you're following state law, but when does that come about that they look at that it's a historical building? Is it only when you're doing a remodel?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's, I wanted to get that clear.
So as you heard the Planning Commission speak, do you mind if I answer the question?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So normally, what would happen, and ideally, what the commission was talking about was us having some sort of historical document that tells you when these things happen, so that when you came to the City of Morro Bay, you would have that, and you would have this inventory, and you're like, "Are we on the list?" "No, okay, we're good." We don't have that. And so because we don't have that, it forces you to go through this process to do the evaluation, one-offs every time. When we go down that road, eventually, we're going to have that document, you won't have to do that, and it won't cost folks additional money to do it. So, one, apologize for not having it, but that is the law, and we do have to follow it, so.
So this, there will be another fee for the historical review, is that...
You will be contracting it out separately. We can get, we can give you, I think the county maintains a list of folks that can do them, so you can get estimates for them, yeah.
Okay. I had one other question regarding the fire sprinklers. So our completed home, our current home of 528 square feet, and then our addition of 300 and...
62 or whatever, 362 or 3...
We'll be just shy of 900, or, yeah, just shy of 900 square feet total. So does that require us to have fire sprinklers on both the original structure and the new structure?
Our ordinance doesn't trigger that until you get over 1,000 square feet.
Okay, because, well, we were notified before that we were going to have to do sprinklers on the old and the new.
Sprinkler systems, upgrading the valve, so if we don't need the sprinkler systems, that means that we don't need to upgrade the valve, correct? To a one-inch line?
You'll have to do the calculation, but you probably won't.
Okay.
Basically, you have to do the math.
Okay.
But I would imagine to fix your count, the house isn't enough to where you would require to upgrade to a one-inch line, that would be for a small house like that. require to upgrade to a one-inch line, that would be, for a small house like that, would be unacceptable.
So, no sprinklers whatsoever? Okay.
Awesome, awesome. One thing I'll just add is, is those questions are building code issues typically, that the state has a lot of impact in. And what we typically do here is, we don't have any capacity to waive building code issues. What we try to do is mediate in terms of the community's interests, like one-story addition versus a four-story addition that you would put on.
Well, that, excuse me, that's what we're trying to understand what's going on here.
Right.
You know, we see all these big homes going up, multi-level, and, you know, we come to Morro Bay to retire. We have a 500-square-foot home. We have grandkids come over, got no place to sleep. Alls what we're trying to do is add an extra bedroom, not changing anything around. And it just seems like that, you know, there's so many hoops to jump through, and it's kind of confusing.
Yeah.
I apologize for bringing this sprinkler thing up. That was probably not the right time, so, my apologies.
Well, I actually think it probably was a good time. But I really don't want to get into, we kind of let this go a little bit into a conversation.
Right, right. I apologize, I apologize.
Rather than, so, no, I kind of let it go a little bit. But I'm going to continue that conversation for a little bit, a little bit further. There are, you know, like Michael said, a lot of these issues, and a lot of the hoops that you have to, you have to jump through are hoops that are set for projects a lot larger than yours. And so, you're, there isn't any, you know, there isn't any bottom limit on some of these state laws and fire, fire codes and building codes and stuff. So, you know, it is, it is confusing, and there's a lot of rules and regulations that you have to go through. But that, that is the essence of bill, of, you know, going through the permitting process, and we try to make it as painless as possible, but it is a, it is a process. So, is there, is there anything else that you'd like to state?
Just, not likely it will ever happen. We plan on living and dying there. But one curious question I have is, if by chance we sold this property in 10 years, would our current, if we get approved for our building, would this limit what another person could do with our property should we ever sell it?
I'll, I'll take a shot at answering that. Any proposal is, has to be evaluated at that, at that time under the current regulations. So, in 10 years, we're not sure, there's going to be a lot of changes in, in energy codes, there's going to be, there's always changes in structural codes. There'll probably be some changes in the planning, you know, we're, so, any future project will need to be evaluated at the time that the future project is, is applied for. So...
Sounds good.
So, this, I don't think this is going to restrict you in any way, shape, or form, but each project has to be evaluated in its own time. So, is there anything else you'd like to state?
Um, I, just one last thing.
Okay, sure.
You opened a can.
So, we did hire a sprinkler company because we were told that in the beginning that we, it would be required. We paid them money, they submitted their sprinkler plans or whatever in with our plans. And so now, I'm a little curious, because we put out money for this company, and I'm understanding that we don't need them now, or...
At this point, I think we just need to clarify with, this will actually be a building code issue.
It is, it is a building code issue. But I don't believe the sprinklers are required for the home.
One thing to take into account, too, is talk to your insurance agent, because if your house is sprinkled, you may have a significantly lower insurance rate.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so it may be worth, you know, the health and safety issue to have it sprinkled, but Jesse, you've got some experience.
I just want to say one thing. There hasn't been a fatality, a fatality in a residence, sprinkled residence since 2001 United States. So, I encourage you to put sprinklers in. If Scott decides that that's not a requirement, that is Scott's role to make that decision, and we won't be doing that here tonight. So, I apologize for bringing it up, but I do encourage you to do it, and Scott will address that with you later, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, let me see if there's any, anybody else would like to speak to this issue, and we'll bring you forward with future questions. Sure, come forward, please.
Hi, I think we've met a couple of times when we've been up there.
Please state your name again.
It's Kirsten Vermaelen, and the Kennys are actually the house behind my uncle Jim's house. So, yeah, we've got a lot of construction going around that, around his home. You know, I wasn't aware of this until recently, but from, from a, you know, representing my uncle's, a homeowner there, I don't see any problem with your extension. I mean, it's not going to impact his home any. I mean, we're going to have a ton of construction going on around there anyway, so what's one more little addition? So, I just wanted to add that to the record. And then, I might not make it back here for the meeting, but you might be seeing me again when you start reviewing the plans for 330 Vaschan, which was the house that burned down that you're demoing, because that's directly next to my uncle's rental apartments. And so, we might have some thoughts on that, too. And then, keep your fingers crossed that we finally get sign off on the building inspection for one of the units at my uncle's apartment that was significantly damaged by water and smoke from the fire. And we've been working really hard with the building planning committee and with the building inspector to get everything approved, so we can close up the walls. And then, we will be getting another more affordable rental unit back on the market in Morro Bay.
Okay, great. I'm sorry we couldn't get the other project in here tonight, so we make it really easy for you.
I was so, I was so impressed, and I was like, oh, for her, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant, then? I'm assuming that we, Kathy, did you want to speak to this? Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? I have one question for you. Could you please step forward, so you're on the record. You had a trust, there's a trust engineering plan in this. Are you planning on stripping the whole roof and replacing the whole roof?
That's still up for, our current roof is...
No. No, I mean, the full struc, okay, the full structure, okay, there's...
There, you know, what, what I understand what's going to happen is they're going to go ahead and put the addition roof on. Now...
Correct.
The, the comp roof that we have that's on there might be all ripped off and a whole new roof put on. But the existing roof that is already there, the cut stack that's already there, will stay there.
Okay, because you might want to check your plans, the way I read it, and I may have read it wrong, but they're calling for a trust, for a new trust system over the existing, the existing structure. So, just take a look at that. There was a note, a note seven on there that called out a trust roof system, so. So, just, you know, just to be aware of it, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant, then? Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, do we have any discussion on this? I, for one, am grateful that the planned addition is really unobtrusive and doesn't, it's probably going to be barely visible from the street, and it doesn't seem to really significantly alter the appearance of the cottage. And I don't have any problem at all with the parking exception. And, but my only, my only comment is, again, with respect to the historical, preserving historical buildings in Morro Bay, that, you know, that this, the sooner we get started, the sooner we'll be hammering out the conflict that exists between preservation and, you know, the taking of somebody's property because they can't do what they plan to do with it. And it's a dicey issue, but there's no way to resolve it until we start it, I guess. Jesse?
I'm going to echo that same sentiment. I don't have a problem with the parking at all. I think I'm somewhat apologetic that you had to jump through so many hoops to get an addition of this size built, but I appreciate you doing it, and I appreciate you going forward with the project and stimulating our economy, and I hope you get what you want.
I think this is a beautiful little project. You've got a nice, sensitive design. I love the little niche hallway outside of your bedroom, you know. If it was historically significant, this is probably something that would be accepted as being sympathetic to the historic nature of the building. And because it has very little impact on anybody else around you, I don't see any reason to make you do something for that parking space outside. The historic aspect would have been, probably that laundry room piece saves you from having to drive to the back to build a garage, you know. So, I'm fine with it. I think it's great, and I wish you well with it.
Yeah, I, I like small houses, and single stories, so I, I, I like the project.
I, I like the project also. It's just, it's just nice and tight and tidy. I think one of the things you are going to come across, too, that you may not realize, is you are going to need a soils report for the construction, even though it's a small, small item. I do have, I do have an issue with the, with the parking. I don't see a resolution to it, but I want to make sure that, you know, if we required a covered parking on this, even a, you know, even a carport, it would have to be into the front setback to be effective. And...
And the side setback.
And the side setback, especially. Driving, you know, bicycling and driving around that neighborhood, there's half a dozen houses within a stone's throw that don't have any covered parking also. And they're in the same situation. So, I don't see this as a grant, you know, as a, as a privileged grant. But I would like, you know, I would like to just state that, that I'm not prone to allowing this often, you know, unless, unless it's specifically in this type of situation. So, do we have, do we have somebody that would like to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Oh, yeah, I know we have that, that's right. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution PC 2918, UPO 515, and ADO 131 on 321 Trinidad Street with the additional condition of a historical evaluation.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, can you call the question, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia.
Aye.
And Chairman Lur.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. So, we're moving on to item number B4. This is case number UPO-446, the precise plan at 945 Embarcadero. Do, does anybody have any ex parte communication on this?
I visited the site. I don't believe I, I didn't talk to the owner. I just talked to staff.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. This is a application for a precise plan conditional use permit at 945 Embarcadero. This is the existing House of Juju building. And this property is a city lease site 96 and 96W. It is located in the waterfront plan development overlay zone. And the location is also within the Coastal Commission's original jurisdiction for coastal development permit approvals. And here is that location within the zoning district that you see on the screen. The project proposes a remodel of the existing restaurant, converting existing rear storage for new additional interior dining and bar area, plus a 71-square-foot new addition for relocated trash enclosure, for a total new building area of 2201 square feet. The other two main components of the project include public access improvements both west and north of the building. This includes 10-foot bayside lateral access, which is a requirement per the waterfront master plan, also including an outdoor public seating counter with windscreen, a widened angle access from the park that, connecting from the lease site adjacent to the neighboring anchor park. And then, last, a maintenance work essentially including sleeving of five existing wood pilings, which support the wharf there on the bayside, and non-structural repairs to the batter wall, which is an element that supports the As required by the planned development overlay provisions, the Planning Commission reviewed the concept plan of the CUP application on September 5, 2017, and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the City Council. The City Council reviewed the project at two public hearings, both on October 10, 2017, and then approved it on March 27 of 2018. During the first City Council meeting, the project was continued at that time to request project changes to delete the proposed anchor park improvements, which is what Planning Commission had reviewed when it saw this project in 2017. And that was to delete those improvements in favor of reconstructing the harbor walk in order to match the grade of the lease site to the south, and remove the small ramp structure that is currently existing there as you connect from one lease site to the next. In response to that, the applicant's proposal now includes reconstructing the wharf to replace the wood decking with fiberglass grating, and matching the railing materials to the north and south of the lease site. And as part of the City Council's approval, they did add two conditions to this project. They are noted in the resolution as conditions 16 and 17. These two conditions added a requirement to relocate the outdoor trash enclosure, excuse me, outdoor trash container, excuse me, in order to prevent wildlife disturbance. And this is shown on project plans, Plan Sheet A 1.1. And then, the second condition requires public access plans to include reference to the Morro Bay Harbor Walk to denote the public lateral access area. The next few slides I have will show you some of these project changes and existing conditions. This is a image of the existing building. And this is the building from the harbor side view. The proposed site plan, this delineates the floor plan area, which, okay, I don't have a pointer here, but in the gray area, you see the existing storage area that is proposed to be restaurant and bar area inside. At the top of the screen, the rectangular area, oops, is the proposed 71-square-foot new trash enclosure area. An overall site plan of the area on the left and upper-left side of the screen is the proposed public access improvements and the angled connection to the adjacent city anchor park. And then, I've here highlighted this in a red circle, just to point out the improved public access there to the harbor walk. And then, this red line just makes it a little bit more visible for those viewing this screen. And then, the arrows just point out the area of pedestrian walkway along that harbor walk. And then, to the right of the red arrow is that outdoor public seating counter as described in the project description. The applicant proposes the exterior finishes to match the existing color and materials. This is shown here on this color and material image, and depiction of the stainless cable railing, windscreen, and painted metal roll-up door, which would be on the northwest corner of the building where that addition is, and which here you see in the north elevation. On the right side of this image is the depiction of the public, outdoor public counter. On the right side of this image is the depiction of the public, outdoor public counter. Here is a detail section, partial section of that Harbor Walk area showing the outdoor public seating counter, the new railing to match existing railing to the lease site to the south. And then also at the bottom of the screen, it shows that batter wall abutting the seawall. West elevation and east elevation. The next couple of slides show the visual simulations as was seen at Planning Commission, in the Planning Commission visual simulations seen then, there were depictions of the proposed changes to Anchor Park. As I stated, those have been removed from the project at the direction of the City Council. Here's the existing view, and then the proposed view which shows, and I'll go back again, shows primarily on the right side of the screen the changes to the wharf and the outdoor public seating counter. Here's an existing view from the south. In the Planning Commission's previous iteration, the wharf was not proposed to be reconstructed, and so it was still going to be that wood wharf finish, and in the City Council review of the concept plan, that is now all proposed to match and have that seamless lateral connectivity. And then these are the public access signs shown in the project plans, and as you will note, it does say Morro Bay Harbor Walk as noted in one of the City Council conditions. Also regarding environmental review as described in the previous concept plan staff reports, although no eelgrass was found underneath the walkway addition, this project is subject to the California Eelgrass Mitigation Program, the KEMP, and has been conditioned accordingly, including for standard biological monitoring, and this is noted as Planning Condition 6 through 11. Therefore, the project is eligible for an exemption under CEQA, Class 15301 for existing facilities based on the small size of the project. Okay, little technical difficulty, oh, there we go. So, the precise plan approval is the final discretionary hearing required for this conditional use permit approval. The proposed project, as previously stated, would remodel the existing, this existing waterfront restaurant and provide new public access amenities as consistent with the city's waterfront master plan, general plan, and local coastal plan. City Council has reviewed the project and accepted the Planning Commission's favorable recommendation with conditions. As proposed with the precise plan, the project is in substantial conformance with the concept plan approval as reviewed by both Planning Commission and City Council. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission conditionally approve the project by adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 30-18. Thank you.
Do we have questions for staff?
I do have one, and Cindy, I don't know if this is something that you have to look at the holistic aspect of the, of the walkway, but when we start putting these seating areas out there like this, I'm not seeing anything that indicates any of them are handicapped access. And I don't know if that's, as an aggregate, if somewhere on the walkways we've got places that are satisfactory for that, or if the certain number triggers that, where that certain number occurs, we have to have them there. Only because it would, it would seem to me it might change some of the heights of the, some of the elements on here, which I don't know if it would make any difference to me looking at it in terms of the walkway. That's just the one question I had, is do we have to add those in?
You don't have to add it, it's required to be accessible.
Okay.
I don't know how that is, but...
I'm going to open another gigantic can of worms here, I know I am. So forgive me, forgive me in advance Scott. This has come up again and again, accessible parking and path of travel to the proposed remodel. Well, is that part of this scope?
So, the project has no parking on site, so...
Right, so everybody's going to walk down there. I get what you're saying, I mean, I understand, I understand the concept. And opening a gigantic can of worms, I understand, but I mean, there's, there's accessible parking spot down by Hoffbrothers, and accessible parking spot by Giovanni's. If we're not asking for an accessible path to either of these spots...
So, we've done, we've done an evaluation of all city facilities as it relates to accessibility, and there's a list of projects that go for that, and our Public Works Department goes through implementing those types of things, not only for like, public sidewalk areas out there, buildings like this, other parking areas in town, other buildings in town. It's a gigantic report they have, it's like that thick that they had done.
I'll agree that, well, I know that that's occurred, it's just, it hasn't resulted in accessible parking and accessible paths of travel, in my opinion, in a way that's consistent with the ADA, American Disabilities Act. That's just my opinion, and I know I'm joking, opening a gigantic can of worms, I don't want to...
Not a can of worms, it's a valid point. We have put in accessible parking spaces in our, on-street, you know, parallel to the curb, in various areas in the city. We have others that need to be put out there. Again, it's a funding limitation, we can't just go out there and put all the ones that we identified where we need them. We've put them out in various areas and spread them throughout town is kind of how, my understanding of how it's taken place to this point. You're right, we do probably need more in other areas, and our plan identifies that, I just, off the top of my head, don't exactly know where it is down in this location.
Right, and I guess, I guess my point to bring it up now is, you know, while we have a tiny bit of leverage, you know, asking the applicant to maybe not install these parking spots, but maybe improve the path of travel to and from, I think it's an appropriate question to ask at this point.
To and from where?
The, wherever the closest spot is.
The parking, city parking. It's not theirs.
Path of travel is still a requirement.
And we have a study that we've contracted for that tells us where these deficiencies are located throughout the city. And the city makes, based on budgetary constraints, makes decisions about where they make those improvements. Because it's public. All our parking over here is public. None of its, this is not, this is not, there's no private parking for this, for this site. So we couldn't trigger them doing offsite improvements related to that, that's our responsibility, literally.
And Jesse, the, any path of travel is off of their lease site.
I understand, and maybe contributing, contributing to the improvement. I mean, I get it, I understand, I understand it's a, it's a very sticky subject that we don't want to enter to it.
It's not a sticky subject, it's a good point, it's actually a good point of, a good topic for discussion, it's just we have no mechanisms to do that. If we had an ordinance that said you're supposed to do something along these lines, or some accessible impact fee that we charge is associated with our projects down on the waterfront because we don't want them to have parking spaces on their site, because we don't.
Right.
We want, we want them to be pedestrian oriented, meaning the city's providing the parking, then we could have done that, but we don't have that right now. That's the problem.
Scott, we also had, we had improvements on the Harbor, the Anchor Park here that the City Council deleted from this, this plan. So part of that was ADA path compliance. It was, if I remember right, it was also, you know, widening the Harbor Walk area along there to be more, more compliant, and then that, that, you know, ladder, or that vertical access adjacent to, adjacent to the building was supposed to be widened also. So, and then that was deleted by the City Council, so I think our hands are tied on that.
They probably are. I say this all because I probably should have said this on the last two projects we did on the Embarcadero, where we're not even really talking about it, and I think we should be talking about it. I mean, as a community, we need to be actively trying to change whatever it is, is a barrier to getting more accessible parking and better paths of travel. Okay, I'm done. My soapbox is off. I'm off.
I have to admit, I hadn't thought about that, but certainly since, for a variety of reasons, we're not imposing, we're not, there is no parking requirement imposed on the restaurant, we should at least make sure that it's reasonably convenient for people with disabilities to get to the restaurant, and, and we should try and do it on a specific basis. So, you know, maybe we, we should give some real thought to, you know, to somehow attaching a fee that, you know, and I'm sympathetic, I mean, there's nothing in, on the books now, I get it, but we ought to do something about that, you know.
Fair point.
And if I could add, just to put this out in the record, because I didn't really address parking in the presentation, this was addressed at the concept review, but just so it's clear, there is a parking requirement that is triggered by the expansion of this restaurant. And it ordinarily would require the provision of four parking spaces. City Council, at the time of concept plan approval, had a program in place to allow payment of parking in lieu fees to be waived for the first four spaces, coincidentally, the number matches. And so, it is in the conditions in the resolution, but just to put that out in the record, that this project does trigger four parking spaces, and per conditions, those four parking spaces are calculated at zero. So, they won't be paying a fee, but...
Okay, at this point, I'll open this up to public comment. So, the applicant, please state your name.
Good evening, Chair Luer and Commissioners, my name is Kathy Novak from Novak Consulting, and I'm here tonight representing Stan Van Bearden for this project. Thanks to staff for all the time that they spent on this through all of the Planning Commission and City Council meetings that we've gone through and their help. I'm pleased to say that the Coastal Commission gave us a waiver on this project, so that was a really great thing that, that happened. I didn't prepare anything tonight because you've seen the project, Cindy gave you all of the detailed information, what happened between the last time you saw it at a concept plan and what you see tonight, which is pretty much the same except for the big changes were for the Harbor Walk and the, and the changes to the Anchor Park. Jesse, thank you for bringing that up because that has actually been a question that has been going through my mind lately, and I've had several people ask me about it, especially if you're in a mid-block. This happens to have Anchor Park next to it, so that it makes it a little different with a city park next to it, but when you're in the mid-block and you're trying to build a Harbor Walk behind, and you don't have access to get from the Embarcadero to the Harbor Walk, and you're relying on somebody else, so it is something that I would appreciate the Planning Commission discussing, and then the city figuring out what they're going to do, because it would be helpful as we go down the path with other projects, and how do we address that issue. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have tonight, but I don't want to need to take any more of your time up as far as describing anything for you.
Okay, seeing as you're the last one out there, why don't you just stay where you are?
Okay.
Comfortably say there's not going to be other public comment. So, I've got a couple of questions, but if somebody else wants to go before me? Okay, okay Kathy, the access to that outdoor seating area?
Yes.
You've got it specifically from the south side, I can see why you wouldn't want to have it open from the north side, but it seems like it should at least have a doorway there that could be, could be accessed to make it easier for an ADA, or easier to be accessed. I know you would like to keep that closed off for wind.
Correct.
But, you know, have you, you know, what are, what is your thinking on having that permanently closed off at that point?
Actually, I had talked to Stan about it from before, and he can speak from the voice of experience with the Hoffbro, where it's located, they have a door there, and the problem is when the wind blows, the door keeps blowing open. And so, he has forced sometimes to lock that door just so that he doesn't have the wind blow it open. So we had a big discussion about that originally, because we talked about that, so it really would be problematic, and it would have to be locked, and, and so we figured that the better way to do it is to leave it open to the south end, and block it from the wind so people can actually use it, and then he doesn't have to chase his door around when the wind blows, because, you know, sometimes with the prevailing northwest, we can get some real gusts going there.
Okay, yeah, it just seems like it, it gives the appearance of a more closed-in, you know, secure, not public-friendly site there.
Right.
That should be public-friendly.
We do have one sign, well, actually, we have two signs. We have one sign at the north end of the, the north corner there that talks about seating available for public use, so if somebody comes up on the north side, there will be a sign so that they can read it, and there will also be one on the south side at the opening there, so we will have the, you know, the sign will look like the balance of the signs to make it consistent with the other projects too.
Okay.
So that we can advertise it as public.
And then do we have a, normally we put a condition in that there not be condiments or other items on the tables to make it appear to be public-friendly, do we have that on this?
I don't remember if we did before, I, that's not a problem.
Because nothing states restaurant usage only as a mustard bottle sitting there.
Sure, yeah, and if that's, if the Planning Commission would like to add that, that's not a problem.
There is no condition referencing the condiments on the counter or whatnot.
Okay, well, we'll present that to the rest of the commission on...
We did have a former project that had that language, so maybe we can just kind of resurrect that old language from that other project that staff has had before that we can institute.
Okay, I think that would, you know, I would like to see that. And then also you have, you know, seeing as this is a precise plan, it's time for us to get picky. So, we have, you have a concrete trash and receptacle picture on here, I know you're just showing the lid, you're stating that that's for the lid operation.
Right, because the City Council specifically said that they wanted something that would be wildlife deterrent, so when Chris was going through the plans, he needed to pick up something, so that's the one that he picked up so that he knew that it was going to be wildlife deterrent, so if you...
Okay, I'm violently opposed to exposed aggregate concrete trash receptacles. I just don't think that, you know, nothing says, you know, CMC as concrete receptacles. So, I would like, I would like to see something, you know, something more appropriate for the trash.
I would love it if you'd give me a specific suggestion of what you would like, so that I have really good direction when I go back out to make these changes.
Maybe a, you know, a slatted oak or metal, a metal receptacle with this lid would be just fine, you know, but something that is not, you know, concrete aggregate.
Thank you.
You know, would, I would appreciate that. And I'll bring then, you know, let everybody else... Okay, so those are my points, I think actually you guys did a really good job on it. I'm, once again, I'm concerned that we didn't have the improvements at Anchor Park for the, for the walkways, you know, and then also for the lateral access at Anchor Park, you know, that's only a five-foot walkway there. We're requiring, we're requiring applicants to bring in 10 feet, and we're only supplying five feet. I think that's, you know, I don't think that's appropriate. I would have rather seen a, you know, seen the original plan done on that, but that's above our pay scale, so... Okay, so anybody else, any other?
Yeah, I would agree with Chairman Luer about the lateral access, the original go-around and the plans where it was wider, I like that better as well. And I was looking at the same thing, the transparent barrier, the north end that's now solid rather than a door. So, I'm assuming the solution of just a door that opened outward wouldn't be a solution.
No.
It would, because the wind would come from the south sometimes and blow it, okay. And then the other thought, do you have any specifics? I noted the idea of some sort of a frost or something or other on the glass so that you try to lessen bird collisions. What's your, what's your thinking? Frost seems to me to sort of be self-defeating of what you're trying to achieve, but what are you thinking about?
They actually have decals, it's called window alert, and we've been using those for, gosh, I don't know, like 10 years or more now that the Coastal Commission has been accepting it, and they basically, they're just decals where you put them on the outside of the glass, and then you just place them at certain areas around the glass, and when you're on the inside looking out, you really can't see them, but when you're on the outside and looking in, you can. So, it's, we're going to do the same decal as most of the projects have used in the, on the waterfront in the past 10, 12 years, so that's when we kind of started doing that.
Very good, very good.
Jesse?
No questions for Kathy.
Okay.
Can I offer just one quick comment?
Sure.
Because both of you had mentioned it. So, when we went to the City Council, we took the proposal with the Anchor Park, and it was beyond our control. We argued to keep the wood deck and do the park improvements, but the City Council said that they didn't want to do that, so we tried to go... So we tried to go with you guys. Okay?
Okay. Great. Thanks. So are, are you amenable to changing the trash can and then?
Sure. And then, and then the condiment language, the language for the condiments not on the counter, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. We have a, have a motion.
Oh, I had a little more discussion.
Oh, do you have more discussion? Okay. I thought we were.
A little more discussion. You know, I walked through it today. It seemed, it seemed really odd, the layout. Was there an addition? Is that an addition or what does the storage room seem so different than the rest of the?
It's three or four additions.
Okay. It, it flows really odd. I don't know that they're, that they're fixing that with this improvement. I'm not opposed to it. I mean, it, I get that they don't want to, you know, sink too much more money into this structure of elevated age. I won't call it an old structure. It, it just flows kind of weird for me. I, I don't, I don't know that that's a reason for me to disapprove it. But as far as the lateral access at the city-owned park or at Anchor Park there, when I was there, I mean, when I'm there quite often, it seems like that whole area is lateral access. You know, people are wandering through there and dogs are, you know, doing craziness. And, and I'm not really opposed to the five-foot. I think it's, I think it's fine, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I want to say everything over time is just about how incrementally you just keep moving the bar forward. And I think the, the access with the triangular piece and this is one of those things, just looking at the two elevational differences, even though we're moving trash behind a screen to the major north part of entrance to the walkway, the, the whole sequence with the windows and the, and the public access behind it is more, much more inviting than it is now. And I, I think the, the welcome to the city that you have from the larger windows and the lighter colors, it's a, it's really going to be one of those subtle things. It's not a gigantic, big dash, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an incremental improvement that I think really helps in one of our, our problem areas where you, you do kind of stall out at the park, you know, knowing where to go. And I think this is going to be a move forward.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with you, Michael. Maybe we can put a concrete bench next to a concrete trash can.
That always helps. Maybe some concrete flowers. Okay, Jesse, did you have any other comments? Okay. I didn't mean to shortchange anybody.
I was like, I contemplated recusing myself because I'm such a frequent patron there of the, of the pot of a hamburger and the fries. So I was delighted to see this happen.
Okay. And Kathy, there were some, I happened to, you know, we were, you know, my vacation, we were in Paris. And throughout Paris, they actually have some great trash receptacles. And I actually took some pictures of them last time we were there. It's odd things that, that attract you, but, you know, they were actually just, just bent metal with clear plastic inserts. So for one thing, there were no bombs, you know, so somebody could easily see a bomb situation, you know, for public safety. And yet they, they met that, you know, they, they were appropriate with that Art Nouveau metro, you know, styling of the town. So I just think Morbid can be, do better than concrete trash cans.
I think that's a presentation offering by the commissioner there.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Chair Luer. Can I get some clarity on how you'd want that condition on the trash can?
I would be comfortable with just, just an agreement and then with staff, you know, making sure that it's, that it's, that it's appropriate. I don't want to condition the project.
Okay.
You know, for that. But just, just a gentleman's agreement.
Okay.
You know, gentlewoman's agreement, general person's agreement, you know, on that. I'd be fine with that. So, but I would like to see the condition on the condiments.
No setups and no, no condiments.
Right.
Okay.
Do they serve at that bench, at that counter? So there won't be servers serving to that counter?
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Commissioner Luer's saying is we want to have the condition that we have on some other, other restaurant projects that have public seating out front that you can't have setups on the tables, including condiments.
Right. But I mean, so Hoffbroe, you get your own food and you take it out there. So I mean, will it be the same type of situation where you're not actually being served waiter, waitress out there?
Yes. And if you want to go to McDonald's and get a hamburger and take it down and sit out there on the, at the counter, you can do that too. That's the idea of the public seating. But if somebody's inside and wants to go sit down, sure. And you might find a, a time where somebody is, maybe carries condiments out with them, but we're, we're going to make sure that they're not always sitting out there, you know, available for the public. Somebody has to actually bring them out.
And, and on the plans sheet, A 1.2, does show a coastal access sign that says, no purchase necessary. This is.
Right.
Seating available for public use.
Yeah. And I saw that that's on both, both ends of that.
Yeah.
So, so that's good. Okay. Do we attempt at a motion for, for anybody?
I'll make a motion to, for resolution, PC 30-18, conditional use permit, UPO 446, for the 945 Embarcadero, House of Juju, with an added condition regarding condiments on the outdoor seating or?
No, 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 no public seating, no, no condiments and no table setups.
Yeah. We got, we got, we got the condition.
I'll second.
Second? We have any discussion?
I'm going to further my discussion on the accessible parking and my desire to have it be included, a path to travel to. But that's the end of my discussion.
Okay. Okay. So any, any other discussion on that? So is that, are you trying to, are you, are you making a?
No.
An amendment to this or?
No, no. Just kind of furthering my discussion on.
Okay.
For the record.
You'd like to see a further presentation or further?
I would like further, I would like future projects to address this and I would like our ordinances to be revised so that future projects should be addressing this in the future.
Okay. So, so we'll have that, that won't be attached to this project or this motion?
Yes. That was not my intent.
Okay. Okay, great.
Miss, that's a question of Scott. Is this part of the Embarcadero-specific plan, that we have some aggregate care for people with disabilities?
So it, so it could. You know, right now, we deal with it, you know, through our capital improvement program. And the city's gone through and upgraded, you know, done a lot of upgrades around the city, you know, based on the amount of money that we had available to do that. This could be something that's, you know, what our draft general plan local coastal program says is go update your waterfront master plan. So that could be a component of that. There are some deficiencies down there. We, we have them in the previous study that I referenced earlier that evaluates, you know, city facilities, sidewalks, streets, parking lots, all those types of things that are, that are public for accessibility or compliance with accessibility requirements or lack thereof.
I guess the only thing that concerns me, I think he brings up a good point, is that if, if we specifically or council specifically waive something that seems to have requirements for parking, it's, it's making the assumption there is a reserve somewhere to take those things up. And while the multiples of cars for seats and things like that are somewhat arbitrary, it's not arbitrary to have required access for people with disabilities. So it would seem to me that every time we, we say this project that's moved forward has wave of parking, we need to somehow say, four cars, we're supposed to be here, blah, blah, blah. Go down the whole Embarcadero where those have happened. What's the aggregate we've forgiven? And then what would be the appropriate handicapped access spaces to go along with that? And do we have those in the public realm somewhere within the?
We do have accessible parking spaces, you know, along the waterfronts. I don't know what the, again, we have an evaluation that looks at all of that. I just, I, I mean, it's like I said, it's just like I haven't looked at the whole thing.
I, I guess my point is that if, if a 7-Eleven on the corner of Santa Rosa and Foothill wanted to, you know, and San Luis Obispo wanted to do a tenant improvement, they would be required to do 20% upgrades. They would be required to put curb cuts and truncated domes and, and, you know, and redo the striping to meet ADA. It doesn't seem appropriate that we are not asking that of our tenants.
They're, they're still required to do that amount of upgrades based on the 20%, based on the improvements they're doing to the building. Parking has nothing to do with it because the parking's public.
Yeah, but if you.
Can't tie it together.
But if you, well, I, I get what you're saying. I understand that. But if you can't get them to the building, then you, then nothing matters, nothing else matters.
And, and like I was saying, that's a separate process. And we have a whole separate document that studies all that. I mean, you, you could stop by my office anytime. I'll grab it out and you can, we can phone through it together. It'll be fun.
I don't, I don't mean to throw a big old stick in this.
It's, it's not. It's just, it's, it's an interesting process. And what, why, I wasn't kidding when I mentioned it before. I said there could be a process down the road where when lease sites turn over, that's something that we look to have, you know, impact fees related to those waterfront, you know, improvements that were being done, waterfront lease sites, that we have a fee that goes along with that to help bring forward some of those improvements based on the plan that we have.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is the 20% improvement that they're required to do hardship. So, you know, there, anything that's, I don't really see any improvements that they're proposing other than the new tenant improvement itself. So to ask the applicant to re-stripe and maybe put some new signs up at the, at the accessible spot in the city right of way, granted, doesn't seem like an incredible hardship to me.
It just may not be legal.
It may not be legal. So we changed the law.
Okay. Kathy, did you wish to add to this?
If you're going to be looking at this, so you bring up a very good point, Jesse. The problem that I heard about the ADA accessibilities, we could not put an ADA spot on the Embarcadero and say that is specifically for House of Juju. I think we're prevented from doing that. So how do you make that connection? So if you, when you're talking about all of that, if you would help us some, in general, figure that part out, that would be tremendous.
It needs to be done.
Thanks. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Did we get a second to the motion? Okay. Okay, great. So we have, any discussion on the motion? Can you call a question then?
Sure. Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Aye.
Chairperson Luer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Kathy. That's, that's a good point and it's something that, you know, that you brought up, Jesse. And I think we, we need to make sure that it's, it's handled, but I don't think we can tie it to this project.
No, no, absolutely. I, I wasn't intending to tie it to the project and, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, that I.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a great discussion and, you know, it's, it's complicated though because you're dealing with public improvements and private improvements, semi-private, they're on public lease sites, I guess. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a simple, straightforward answer. And the planning commission can't mandate improvements in the public realm.
Absolutely.
That, that authority lives with the city council and the city council only.
Right. And they count on us to recommend things as we see necessary. And I think this is one of those perfect examples.
We had a similar condition on, you know, EV charging station, even though there was parking attached to it, you know, and when that parking was, was voided as a, as a requirement, then we could no longer attach conditions to it. So, so it's similar. Okay. So new business, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. So now's the time, Jesse, for planning commissioner comments?
I've made plenty.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Scott, your comments?
Um, just, our next meeting, we're going to bring back Module Four. So taking a look at that, that'll be your first shot at that. Pay special attention to some of the parking requirements that are in there, especially for single-family homes. I'll tease that. You'll have to look at them and see what it says.
Okay. Okay. Unless there's anything else, at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on October 16th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. And we'll eagerly go through Module Four.
Out of here before eight. I don't know what to do with myself.